And begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Dries. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we gather together as a commission, we ask your guidance today in the matters that come before us. Grant us the wisdom to look out for the taxpayers in the county. We give you thanks for all the moisture this region has had received, Lord, it's what a blessing. Everything's green, it's what a blessing. Furthermore, Lord, we ask that you be with everyone in this room. Grant us your peace and love and protect us in our daily lives, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Don't have any chair comments this morning and we'll begin immediately with the consent agenda as printed. Is there a move, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda and the payments provided therein. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move immediately into business items, first up, Lana Devol, good morning.
Good morning, Lana Devol, Finney County Economic Development Corporation. Just a quick update on things that we're working on, those of you who were at the fifth week meeting know that four-year degree programs have kind of risen to the top of things that we're making really good momentum on. So that will continue today, I've got some meetings this morning that I'm hopeful will bring some pretty significant changes to our region. In looking at those numbers, we are very normal and average, if you will, with the rest of the state when we look at high school completion and when we look at technical degree and community college completion. However, when we get to the four-year university, not surprisingly because of our distance to four-year universities, that number goes down drastically, about half of what the remainder of the state is. So it's obviously a challenge in looking at jobs that were open in the community over the last couple of months. We have about six to eight hundred jobs that require at least a bachelor's degree and obviously we're not producing those folks within our own community. So we're adding a double challenge to every industry that's trying to recruit folks with degrees. Not only are they having to recruit people to the community, they're having to try to find housing and childcare for those folks as well. So we feel like it's one of the most important items that we'll take on as a community and we look forward to making some good strides there. Beyond that, housing, we do have some good projects moving forward, some higher density stuff moving forward. We continue to work on those and we've got a couple of larger apartment complexes that we'll start seeing going through the planning process over the next few months. So that's exciting, just not enough, never enough. So we continue to look for those opportunities to increase those opportunities in the community. Any questions on any of that?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go.
Not a question, but just a comment. I noticed in the last few days that at the Board of Regents meeting the last week that Pittsburgh State recommended, and I believe it was adopted by the Board of Regents, that people going to four-year universities in Kansas, if they have enough hours to complete an associate's degree and they quit that four-years university, that they will be awarded that associate's degree. And I thought, and it was, the title was a big idea from a small college and it was Pittsburgh State that brought that forward and I thought that was a real positive thing for higher ed, not specific to our area like Lana's presenting, but I thought that was very positive for the state of our education in Kansas.
I would agree, that's a, that's a good move forward.
Anything else? All right, let's move on then to empirical, please.
Yeah, so Empirical Foods, as you know, they've been under construction now for a few years and they are slated to finish their construction at the end of the year and begin operations. However, you signed a memorandum of understanding with them for their tax abatement almost three years ago now and those do have an expiration of three years. That was put in the policy to expire really to encourage the projects to get underway, not so much as a penalty if your construction went longer than you had anticipated due to little things like pandemics and supply chains. So you do have before you a request to extend that MOU to allow them to complete their construction without slowing down the tax abatement process in the meantime. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I have two different documents for consideration, one is an extension of the memorandum of understanding, the other was just a revised memorandum of understanding with a three-year term.
That's correct, Kara, seven to the extension.
Okay, and why do I have just a new one for three years?
That's the one that Economic Development submitted and then Kara did one that's simply an extension, she could speak to that.
Kara, what should we do?
I was looking at the tax abatement policy as well as the original MOU from June of 2020. The original MOU from June of 2020 stated that in C3 that should construction not be completed by the expiration of the MOU, a new application would be required. The tax abatement policy says that a formal application shall be completed and turned in with a thousand-dollar processing fee. In speaking through all of this, it's, I mean, really, as Lana said, it was a matter of supply chain and everything else there. So rather than necessarily starting the process over, there is section D of the tax abatement policies that says that any portion of this policy or procedures outlined herein may be waived by the county commission if it is in the best interest of the county and accordance with state law. In looking at it, I believe that between the original MOU and the tax abatement policy, I believe that we probably just need to do the extension and do it for a time certain, whether you want to put that for an additional year at this point in time, especially considering that maybe they're slated to be done prior to that time rather than another three years. If they're not done within that time, then maybe we need to reconsider if they need to start over again.
What do you recommend for the length of time?
Yeah, I think a year will be fine and to, just so that you understand why there's some confusion there. When I was first asked about this, it was probably six or eight months ago when Mary Holmes brought it to our attention that this was going to expire and she had been in conversations with the property valuation group in Topeka and they suggested that we needed to extend that MOU. At that time, all I did was pull up the original MOU, sent that to her along with what you had signed, but then nothing took place with it and we had to switch in legal counsel for you all, so it just kind of got missed. So this was Kara's first opportunity to review it and, and come up with a solution. So I absolutely believe the extension is all you would need to do.
All right, what's the length of time the commission believes is appropriate?
You, you requested a year, correct?
Yeah, I think that's what Kara put in, you could do a year, you could do two years, whatever. I think we'll, I think we'll be all right with a year.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we extend it two years and let's be on the safe side.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that and also that needs to authorize the chairman's signatures in your motion, Larry.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, okay, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, two years it shall be.
Thank you, and Kara, if you need assistance getting that to the empirical folks for signature, just let me know. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, let's move on then to empirical, please.
Yeah, so Empirical Foods, as you know, they've been under construction now for a few years and they are slated to finish their construction at the end of the year and begin operations. However, you signed a memorandum of understanding with them for their tax abatement almost three years ago now and those do have an expiration of three years. That was put in the policy to expire really to encourage the projects to get underway, not so much as a penalty if your construction went longer than you had anticipated due to little things like pandemics and supply chains. So you do have before you a request to extend that MOU to allow them to complete their construction without slowing down the tax abatement process in the meantime. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I have two different documents for consideration, one is an extension of the memorandum of understanding, the other was just a revised memorandum of understanding with a three-year term.
That's correct, Kara, seven to the extension.
Okay, and why do I have just a new one for three years?
That's the one that Economic Development submitted and then Kara did one that's simply an extension, she could speak to that.
Kara, what should we do?
I was looking at the tax abatement policy as well as the original MOU from June of 2020. The original MOU from June of 2020 stated that in C3 that should construction not be completed by the expiration of the MOU, a new application would be required. The tax abatement policy says that a formal application shall be completed and turned in with a thousand-dollar processing fee. In speaking through all of this, it's, I mean, really, as Lana said, it was a matter of supply chain and everything else there. So rather than necessarily starting the process over, there is section D of the tax abatement policies that says that any portion of this policy or procedures outlined herein may be waived by the county commission if it is in the best interest of the county and accordance with state law. In looking at it, I believe that between the original MOU and the tax abatement policy, I believe that we probably just need to do the extension and do it for a time certain, whether you want to put that for an additional year at this point in time, especially considering that maybe they're slated to be done prior to that time rather than another three years. If they're not done within that time, then maybe we need to reconsider if they need to start over again.
What do you recommend for the length of time?
Yeah, I think a year will be fine and to, just so that you understand why there's some confusion there. When I was first asked about this, it was probably six or eight months ago when Mary Holmes brought it to our attention that this was going to expire and she had been in conversations with the property valuation group in Topeka and they suggested that we needed to extend that MOU. At that time, all I did was pull up the original MOU, sent that to her along with what you had signed, but then nothing took place with it and we had to switch in, in legal counsel for you all, so it just kind of got missed. So this was Kara's first opportunity to review it and, and come up with a solution. So I absolutely believe the extension is all you would need to do.
All right, what's the length of time the commission believes is appropriate?
You, you requested a year, correct?
Yeah, I think that's what Kara put in, you could do a year, you could do two years, whatever. I think we'll, I think we'll be all right with a year.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we extend it two years and let's be on the safe side.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that and also that needs to authorize the chairman's signatures in your motion, Larry.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, okay, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you chief.
Thank you.
Good work, chief.
All right, we are down to item on the agenda, resolution thirteen twenty-three in Finney County, twenty-three dash twenty-two rezoning, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Please announce yourself and tell us what you got.
I'm Dante Thompson, I'm planner with Neighborhood and Neighborhood and Development Services and this is a consideration of a rezone for the property generally located at eighteen thirty West Nine Mile Road, Finney County, Kansas. The applicants Erin and Travis Holstein are requesting to rezone the property generally located at eighteen thirty West Nine Mile Road, Finney County, Kansas, from A Agriculture District to RR Rural Residential. The seven, the seven point seven five acre property currently contains a house and the applicant intends to demolish the current house and construct a new one on the lot. The proposed residential use is inconsistent with the comprehensive future land use plan and categorizes this area as agriculture potential. The lot is less than forty acres and would not meet the minimum acreage requirements of A Agriculture District. Rural Residential is the appropriate zoning district for the single-family dwelling within the county and provides a small variety of uses. The governing body may make its recommendation and state their findings according to the section twenty-seven point zero four zero listed in the staff report. At the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three commission, Planning Commission meeting, they recommended approval of the rezone resolution. And there are three alternatives in front of you. First, the governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. Second, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And third, the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one, approving the proposed resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Questions or concerns? Would you please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve alternative one and follow the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the proposed resolution.
Is there a second?
I would second that and it appears the resolution number is thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, is that correct?
Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, that's part of it.
All right, comments, sir?
Just a question, kind of looking at the site map, it looks like an old farm stood on that corner, is that correct?
It's my understanding, yes, that is an old house.
I refer to that as the old Bontrager place, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion from the commissioners on the pending motion, has it been seconded?
Yes.
All right, very good. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we'll hear from Alisa Charles, Assistant with Neighborhood and it's regarding waiver at forty-one fifty East.
Good morning, please introduce yourself. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Alisa Charles, Assistant Neighborhood and Development Services Director. What I have before you is a waiver at forty-one fifty East Shulman Avenue. So Jabby, or I'm sorry, Abby and Joe Fry are requesting a waiver to allow a metal container on a permanent basis at forty-one fifty East Shulman Avenue, Finney County, Kansas. The property is zoned MR Medium Density Residential and contains plus or minus two acres. The applicants would like to keep the storage container on a permanent basis, however, the lot does not meet the minimum acreage set by the Finney County zoning regulations. Section twenty-three point zero seven zero two of the Finney County zoning regulations allow lots less than five acres to be issued a building permit for a wheeled vehicle, portion of a wheeled vehicle, or a metal container of any kind on a temporary basis for thirty days and a maximum of ninety days with extensions. Residential lots between five and forty acres may be issued a building permit and become a permanent structure under the following provisions. A conditional use permit shall be obtained as outlined in Article twenty-nine. The structure shall not exceed fifteen percent of the total lot area. The structure shall conform to the general character of the neighborhood, including but not limited to the height, color, texture, and materials of the main structure and the location requirements for accessory structures. And the structure shall meet all the requirements to protect the safety of the public as outlined by the adopted zoning regulations and building codes of the county. November twenty twenty-two and January twenty twenty-three, the applicants were sent orders of violations since they had yet to apply for a permit to allow the storage container on their property. The order of violation stated that metal storage containers may only be permitted temporarily upon issuance of a building permit or permanently with a conditional use permit. The applicants applied for a conditional use permit on December seventh, twenty twenty-two. After further review, Neighborhood and Development Services discovered that the property did not meet the requirements for a conditional use permit and has changed the language in order of a violation letter to reflect that a variety of options may be considered in addition to a conditional use permit, abatement, waiver, amendment. Neighborhood and Development Services called the applicant on December eighth, twenty twenty-two to notify the applicants. Neighborhood and Development Services later met with the applicant to discuss the different options that they had, which were to remove the container, ask for a waiver, or amend the zoning regulations. The applicants decided that the amendment would be the best option for them. The applicants also applied for an amendment request to amend section twenty-three point zero seven zero of the zoning, Finney County zoning regulations. The amendment request was to decrease the minimum acreage from five to two to allow by a conditional use permit a metal storage container on a permanent basis. The proposed amendment went before the Planning Commission and on multiple attempts, the Planning Commission did not recommend approval of the amendment and asked staff to bring forth a new amendment in the future. At this time, staff does not have a date set to bring forward a new amendment, however, would set a goal of August seventeen, twenty twenty-three, Planning Commission meeting. There are two different amendment processes when proposing an amendment. When the applicant proposes an amendment, staff works with the applicant on what they want and will research other jurisdictions that are similar to this area. This helps educate everyone on what other jurisdictions are doing. In the memo, staff speaks to the other jurisdictions to compare. Throughout the process, staff works with the applicants to try to agree on the proposed amendment. If the applicant disagrees, staff will bring forward the amendment as the applicant has requested along with some suggestions. If staff is proposing an amendment, staff will research other jurisdictions and hold a pre-meeting with the governing body if the amendment is a significant change to get a feel for what the governing body would like to see. Throughout this process, staff will work with other departments if the amendment also affects them. Your alternatives today is the governing body may approve the waiver or the governing body may not approve the waiver. Staff is unable to recommend approval of the waiver, however, if a waiver is granted, staff would recommend that the applicant meet the requirements of the building code. The applicants are here, if you have questions for them or would like them to come up and talk and I would be happy to answer any other questions.
First, we'll take up questions from the commission to you, if you have any questions for Development Services. Okay, we've also read the minutes that were attached to your information and it's very detailed and very well done, thank you. And I would invite the owners, do you have anything that you would like to say to the commission? And then we'll hear back from Alisa. Would you please come up, our audience can't hear you, so please introduce yourself.
I'm Abby Fry, I believe.
Good morning and welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Don't be nervous, these guys aren't that bad and I just want you to tell us what you need.
So I believe everything's in my letter that I submitted for the waiver. I have, we've tried to call and get the correct information, we were given the wrong information. We got the container, we got the violation that had the wrong information, so I applied for the conditional use permit and then got rejected and then started this whole process. So we're trying to get approval for it so that we can keep it and don't lose more financial gains, which it is being, they're going to look at it in August, so that's nice. The only thing about the building code is I've been told that I have to remove it and put a foundation underneath it and that's what my understanding is from the thing. I've looked up some different anchoring and there's ways to anchor it into the ground, but everything I'm reading so far with my email communication is that I have to put it into a foundation. So that has me a little concerned that this is just going to be more of a fight because it's continued on for a while now. So I would hope you would approve it without the building code, but I can understand and continue to jump through hoops if needed.
All right, while you're there, if you would, these containers or containment vessels were visiting that policy and you're out in front of it by quite a ways.
Yes.
And so while you've had some extraordinary expense, we, I understand the history of it. But I'm also wanting to guard against making exceptions or waivers for any person that wants to put up a structure or set something on their property that doesn't conform to the zoning regulations.
Well, we tried to be in front of it and were given the wrong information.
Right, but the land's been there a long time, the codes have been there a long time. This is a six-month process, but I, I work in the legal business, ma'am, and you know, the lady of justice, she's adorned with a crown, she has a sword to carry out the judgment, scales to weigh the evidence, but on her left hand, there's no clock. I don't care what time it is.
Yeah.
And so the six months that you've been into this, while it's, appears burdensome, it's a very short period of time, the land's been there a lot longer and these regulations have been there since fifteen. So I'll open it up for other questions from the commissioners to the landowner, if there are any. Let's try to keep this brief. Commissioners?
My question is, and, and I, I get confused with our boundaries for our districts that we represent, but I think it's in my district, it's over in the east side and so I have been by there. Is that a new container or a used container, help me understand that for, for one thing.
It's a used container we bought from the local business owner here that rents them. And so it's just a used shipping container that has the locked doors and everything.
Okay, thank you, and then my other questions are for Alisa when we ask her back up.
All right, very good. Anything else from the landowner, yes, sir?
Do you not have a next-door neighbor who also has a shipping container on their property? Virtually a next-door neighbor?
Um, yes, and they're less acreage than we are.
I'm probably a mile forty.
And there's a few in town that have them that have extremely less acreage than we do and they're within the city limits that I've just driven by and noticed.
Well, you do know that the city's not our jurisdiction.
Yes, I'm just stating the obvious.
And Mr. Chairman, our code enforcement is complaint-driven. So if you have a complaint about some of those things, you need to express those to Alisa in that department, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for the landowner? Thank you, Alisa, we'll call you back up for additional questions. My question is, is that your recommendation is to acquire compliance with the code in granting this waiver, so it'd be a waiver with conditions, is that how I understand it?
That is correct.
So the code is going to be incorporated into our waiver?
Correct.
Is it correct that the landowner would then have to build a foundation under which to put this container?
Yes, so she would need footings that were not less than twelve inches deep and then she would need to put a continuous foundation around the bottom of it and then anchor it to that and that is directly from the twenty eighteen IRC. So that's just metal containers in, in general, meet, have to meet that requirement.
Other questions for?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm a minority on this, commission, I've stated before, to me it makes more sense to have a shipping container than an eighty-nine-dollar Walmart building that'll blow away.
Okay, thank you. And then my other questions are for Alisa when we ask her back up.
All right, very good. Anything else from the landowner? Yes, sir.
Do you not have a next-door neighbor who also has a shipping container on their property? Virtually a next-door neighbor?
Um, yes. And they're less acreage than we are.
I'm probably a mile forty-.
And there's a few in town that have them, that have extremely less acreage than we do, and they're within the city limits, that I've just driven by and noticed.
Well, you do know that the city's not our jurisdiction.
Yes. I'm just stating the obvious.
And Mr. Chairman, our code enforcement is complaint-driven.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you have a complaint about some of those things, you need to, uh, express those to Alisa in that department, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for the landowner? Thank you. Alisa, we'll call you back up for additional questions. My question is, is that, uh, your recommendation is to require compliance with the code in granting this waiver? So, it'd be a waiver with conditions, is that, as I understand it?
That is correct.
And... So, the code is going to be incorporated into our waiver?
Correct.
Is it correct that the landowner would then have to build a foundation under which to put this container?
Yes, so she would need, um, footings that were not less than twelve inches deep, and then she would need to put a continuous foundation around the bottom of it and then anchor it to that. And that is directly from the twenty eighteen IRC. So, that's just metal containers in, in general, meet, have to meet that requirement.
Other questions for-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm a minority on this, Commissioner. I've stated before, to me, it makes more sense to have a shipping container than an eighty-nine-dollar Walmart building that'll blow away the first windstorm that comes along. We don't require that Walmart building to be anchored. That shipping container's pretty heavy. Uh, it's, take a whale of a wind to blow that away, I would think, so as you guys are examining the, uh, whatever new, new regulations are put in place, that might it be appropriate to consider the weight of that building or container? So, it's, it's pretty much anchored itself, so that, that's my-
Just to answer that, we'd have to amend the building code to exempt them.
Okay. Is that part of the process that we're gonna look at in August on the new regulations for-
That is not. Any amendment that we do to the building code would have to go to the Building Board of Safety Appeals first for consideration, and then we'd have to go to the governing bodies.
Well, we're examining our code with regard to containment vessels, or these storage containment vessels. Wouldn't we also want to visit how they're going to be placed on the property at the same time?
We could do that. The timeline might be a little bit further, um, to get in front of the Building Board of Safety Appeals before the Planning Commission, but we can certainly do that.
I think if we're gonna do anything, we ought to do it once.
What we need to avoid, Mr. Chairman, is the landowner putting one of those on their property and, and it's there for some months, and then they're told, hey, that's not in compliance. So, if we can get the compliance issue ironed out before they ever haul that to the property, it would be profitable.
I, I think I have one observation. I, I believe under the five-acre cargo trailers with wheels underneath them are allowed. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's how our zoning regulations are written now.
I guess it's a, I've got one of those darn cargo trailers with the wheels underneath them at the farm. I would like to see that go away. Uh, I prefer, what they, what they've chosen is a much better option than the cargo trailers with the wheels. I think you need to look at that one when you do the, if you're gonna look at things and, and look at this, look at that part of it as well. I, too, have driven by, and I believe they're in my district, Mr. Commissioner.
I don't know where the line is. I really don't.
It is not an objectionable, the way that, with the color of it and the way it's setting is, is not a, does not distract, I do not believe. And I did, too, notice the other cargo trailer in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, um, mixed opinions on all of it, but I, I think I, if I understand where the chairman's going, I think we need to do this process, let it, let it work, work, work through the process instead of make a waiver. Other comments?
If we, um, they're gonna have to move it if we, while we're going through this process, or not? Alicia?
That's part of my question.
Yes, if they weren't granting the waiver, they would need to remove, remove it since they are not in compliance.
But if we're going through a process to rewrite the codes and everything, I'm just trying to be considerate to the property owner, that it appears to me that, you know, if we grant the waiver, we can put a stipulation that at, at the advent of new codes being in action, they have to follow those new codes. Is that-
Go ahead.
Well, the other term that comes-
I guess I should have heard it.
Would not be grandfathered in, is the other phrase that comes to my mind.
Well, and I think part of this, too, is you could grant a temporary waiver on this one, rather than a permanent waiver. You granted it temporarily until such time as these codes are going to be amended. If it comes down to it and everything's where they could be in compliance with it, then they'd be good at that point, but where they avoided having to move it at this point, where it's a temporary waiver versus it's just an absolute waiver. So, you could still do a waiver with conditions, but it's a temporary rather than permanent.
Well, that's all, to me, it's all at the discretion of the commission as to what waiver you want to grant, if any. Uh, none of us moved a container that violated the code onto our property. As I stated in my opening remarks, the property's been there a lot longer than all of us. Uh, I'm, Commissioner Pishney, you have another remark?
Well, I, I, that, my thought, uh, line was along what our counsel just, uh, just expressed. Because the applicants have been given bad information, wrong information along the line, I think we owe them some courtesy with regard to this issue, but I am not in favor of a permanent waiver. Uh, I believe we do need to amend. I, I do, I don't want them to go to, uh, an expense of putting a foundation under it and then our amendment says foundations aren't required. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to say what those amendments will be, but, uh, so I, I would be in favor of the temporary waiver while this amendment tour, the, looking at our, uh, documents, uh, is taking place.
Is that a motion?
I think I want to be a little more, uh, precise on our motion.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how to word it, but-
Well, ending on-
Temporary, temporary is the word I would use.
Ending on what, uh, council thinks, I believe that a motion for a temporary waiver for enforcement for six months, with the condition that, uh, this property is not grandfathered in as a prior zoning change, and that the landowner will comply with the new regulations when promulgated, and the temporary waiver is effective for six months, and we can revisit it at that time.
I believe that would be appropriate.
I would so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the landowner a, a waiver from enforcement for a period of six months, uh, that it is not grandfathered in, in that we will continue to work on these resolutions, and they will comply with the zoning regulations when completed, applicable to these shipment containers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. I vote no, because I have the pleasure of doing so, because it's going to pass, but I don't think that we should be in the habit of granting waivers for non-conforming use. Uh, the landowners, get your waiver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry.
Say, Commissioner Jones, if you need to ask me which one. All right, uh, next on our agenda is our property insurance, uh, renewal, and Mr. Trent Speck is here from Iron Insurance, along with Doug Keller. Gentlemen?
Hello, thank you again for having us. My name is Trent Speck. Trent Speck with Iron Insurance, this is Doug Keller behind me. Uh, want to, first off, thank you for all that you do for our community and county. Thank you, Dory, for all that she and her department heads did. Uh, our goal was to have the renewal back by June first, and we accomplished that goal. So, we met with Dory, Robert, and their team on June first to go through the renewal, kind of get deeper in the weeds. Uh, what we provided is just a premium summary page, but I'll get into that in a sec. So, my, uh, my position at Iron Insurance is kind of, or for the county at least, is to be the quarterback for the risk transfer and the risk management side of things. So, the risk transfer is just the transfer of insurance, understanding there's no gaps in coverage, understanding, you know, for example, on the auto liability, what years you want physical damage on it, what years do you not want physical damage on it, so that kind of thing. On the other side of it is the risk management piece and providing some services and some values for you guys, uh, for the county. Uh, I did bring a sheet of paper, I forgot to give it to Dory, so it's just a little calendar schedule. So, Doug Keller is providing that. It's, it's our risk management service and our service cycle that we want to abide by. Just kind of helps keep both of us in line with our projects that we have going on. So, our team at Iron Insurance meets once every two weeks to talk about the county and other, uh, what we call our major account division, so our other clients in western Kansas, and we just talk about some projects that we're undertaking and making sure that everyone's on the same page. So, for example, in the last year, what we've kind of provided, Fennec County, is some EMS training program material. We've provided some telematics information. We completed a walkthrough of the jail with our risk control specialists on staff. Uh, Travelers came back and said that the jail was performing at high levels, so congrats on that. But, that's a, on that sheet that I passed out, like I said, it's a service cycle. So, once every, once every about two to three months, we have a different item on there. Twice a year, we have claims analysis that we get into the weeds and we see how claims are undertaken and if we need to step in, and, uh, we have a claims analysis, analysis professional on staff that has background in that. So, uh, then, six months out, we have a stewardship meeting where we have an open, transparent conversation with the county, and you guys tell us how we're doing and what we need to improve on, and we, uh, we talk about the projects that we've undertaken and what we need to keep working through and working on. So, uh, that's, that's a big piece of what we want to provide, just more than insurance piece, but we want to provide the risk managements, um, also on that. So, uh, as you're following along on the premium summary page that we provided, uh, you are with Travelers. We moved from EMC probably five to six years ago. I believe Sean Myers moved from EMC to Travelers, five or six years ago, is my understanding. Travelers is a great carrier that has a lot of respect and is one of the, in the nation's biggest in municipalities and counties. So, you know, we want to be good stewards of your money and taxpayers' money here in the county, so that's also my job, is negotiating the price with Travelers and making sure that the price is fair, but it's accurate also. So, uh, overall, we feel that is, is a great renewal, and we're gonna talk about the increases, and, uh, if you have any questions or comments, don't be afraid to interrupt me, and, and I can maybe further get into the weeds and explain why they have went up. So, uh, I'll start with the property. Uh, the property is up nineteen percent. Uh, overall, Travelers increased all the property and the, what we call business personal property, the desk chairs, everything on the inside of it, five percent. And they did take a, a rate increase. Now, this impacted you seven percent. Now, overall, we compared it with a similar municipality that is with Travelers, and they, I believe, took a eight percent increase on the rate and seventeen percent increase on the value. So, uh, we're more favorable compared to that. You know, and, um, the property is kind of a hard market right now. Uh, as most of you know, there's kind of three reasons why, and if you want me to further explain these, I'm more than happy to, but inflation is one of them, economic uncertainty, and then, last but not least, is reinsurance. So, property overall is, is just taking a hit. The next schedule is inland marine. Inland marine is up two percent. Uh, for those that are not familiar with inland marine, this is your motor graders, your drone, anything that is moving throughout the county that needs to be scheduled that is of high value. Next is crime. Crime is, uh, flat. No, no increase there. General liability is up, and the reason for this is the budget increase of four million dollars. Drone exposure was added to the general liability, and there's some claims that are going through litigation right now that is impacting that. Uh, commercial auto liability, uh, is interesting. Commercial auto, last year, we insured a hundred and forty-nine units. This year, we're insuring one fifty-one, so the rate on the autos is actually down, but we are insuring two more vehicles. The next line is commercial auto physical damage. So, Dory and, uh, our team met, and they decided anything two thousand fourteen and older would just, unless it was a specialty vehicle, would be, would have just liability only. Anything two thousand fifteen and newer would have physical damage. So, last year, for example, we insured seventy-two vehicles that had physical damage. This year coming up, we propose that there will be eighty-seven vehicles that have physical damage. So, that's why you see a big increase on that line. Uh, the next three lines are what we call the professional lines. It's the law enforcement liability, it's the public entity employment practice liability, and the public entity management liability. All three of these lines are up, and some of the reasons are the rate increase, the headcount is up, uh, budget increase, and then last but not least, we have some claims going through this, going through litigation with, that are open and have high reserves on them also. Umbrella, uh, overall is up just a touch also. Uh, umbrella goes over all lines except property, crime, and inland marine. Now, I do want to note, because we wanted to provide an optional quote for the property, we did come back, currently, you have a fifty thousand minimum on, and with a one percent win hell, so the damage has to be at least fifty thousand dollars before Travelers will kick in. Uh, next year, it is gonna go to a hundred thousand. Like I said, the, the property is just such in a hard market, so that does decrease your properties, five thousand dollars, but I don't recommend it this year, but we just want to make note of it for next year for budget purposes going forward. And then, uh, one, one off-cycle coverage that I do want to note is Dory and her team put together MFA. So, what MFA is, is multi-factor authentication. So, Dory and her team did this, you know, if you go to the bank and you try to log into your checking account or savings account, you have to put in a six-digit PIN. So, that's multi-factor authentication. So, Dory and her team put together that throughout the last year. So, we were able to move from what we call excess and surplus on the cyber to Travelers, who has a specialty in that also when it comes to counties, and that allowed us to save anywhere from six to ten thousand, because cyber's a lot like property, it's just a hard market right now, it's being hit very hard on the insurance waves, so. Do you guys have any questions, concerns?
Yes, sir.
Trent, um, just curious, um, number one, on the step up on the, on the, you're eliminating, um, full coverage at eight years of age, is that gonna be automatically year after year, we're gonna move it up?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we, we can work with Dory on. You know, uh, autos are at a, at a different time, you know? I, I believe the county previous had five years, but cars are kind of not appreciating value, they're just staying steady. So, you know what? A car that might depreciate four years ago, might lose fifty percent of its value, now, now we're not seeing that as much, so it's, uh, we feel like Dory and her team wants to keep that on a little bit longer.
Okay. Uh, and then the second one on, on the carriers, so you've, evidently, you've researched other carriers other than just Travelers, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We, uh, we didn't go through the formal proposal, so last, when we moved it from EMC six years ago, uh, we saved such significant amount that we, uh, Travelers is, is just that competitive.
Well, it looks to me like they're gaining it back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the jail is supposed to be a good performance, I'd hate to see it as a bad performance, a thirty percent increase.
Yeah, there, there's a, you know, like I, like I said, there's a couple claims that are open, and they're taking rate on those, so, uh, for example, there's one claim on the general liability section that has a hundred and seventy-eight thousand in reserves, so.
So, it's all claim-driven, then?
I want to say it's claim-driven. No, I think it's, it's more a number of factors. You know, we're in a hard market right now, it's just, it's the rate increase that they're taking, the, the headcount is up, uh, a lot of different factors. I mean, it's just, insurance is tough right now.
Well, the taxpayer's in a hard market, too.
Mm-hmm.
Hear from them.
Mm-hmm.
Questions?
We mentioned a lot of this, what is the liability limit on a lot of these policies you're talking about, uh, any of them, any particular one? Are they all limited to a certain amount?
Yeah, so, uh, for example, I'm, you have a one million, two million on your general liability, and then you have, you know, uh, auto limits is one million, law enforcement liability is one million, public official employment practice liability is one million, and then public official management liability is one million. But then you also have the umbrella that can go over any number of those, so it's, like, like I said, it, it can go over your general liability. If something happens and it exceeds one million, your umbrella can kick in for that line.
Just to follow that up, Mr. Chairman, and what's the limit on the umbrella?
Uh, two million right now.
Total combined or two additional?
Two additional.
Do you think that's adequate?
Uh, I do. I do, you know, I asked Doug Keller that same question. I said, you feel like that's in line? You know, me, me and him met previously to this meeting a couple, or last week, talking about it, and, uh, we feel that's, that's the sweet spot. Now, if you want to look at increasing it, we more than happy to get a quote back, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Back in the EMC days, there was a fellow from Wichita- Back in the EMC days, there was a fellow from Wichita by the name of Jim Horns, who used to come out and help us with safety and training and equipment and so on. Does Travelers have anything comparable?
Yeah, so, there's two parts to that question. Travelers does have a specialty in that. For example, they came out and they looked through the jail and they looked at the physical hazards. They walked through. On the other side, Iron Insurance, we have two risk control specialists on staff. One lives in Wichita and he's out here about once a month. He was actually out here last week and we met with him and a couple of different accounts where he can walk through. So, while Travelers does have that service, we also have that in staff where we have paid employees that can come and provide that additional resource. Kind of goes back to that risk management side of things.
I ask that question for the publics.
Oh.
I'm aware that when we have a, a day at, at the fairgrounds with our county employees, that your folks are there to help with that training and so on, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other questions about the insurance?
Just a question to staff, Mr. Chairman, to Jenny and to Robert. Have we, as we're working in this, is the renewal, well, quick question before I ask to them. The renewal date is?
July one.
So, this would, part of this would be in our current budget? And that's where my question is going, because we can anticipate what it might be for twenty-four, but do we have the financial means to absorb this increase?
The answer is yes. Wasn't quite ready for that big of an increase, but yes, we can still do it this year.
The hesitancy is, is nobody wants to be the person to make the motion to approve the seventeen percent rate increase.
Nineteen percent.
Yeah, it's a bunch. If I misspoke, I'm sorry. So, I'm still looking for a motion to approve the purchase of property insurance as discussed and outlined in our packet.
Mr. Chairman, my hesitancy was to make sure I was looking through each of these different things and asking the appropriate questions. And so, I will make that motion that we accept the renewal for our property and casualty insurance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded by the spend, spenders to renew our...
Is the recording off?
No, it's, it's on. For the rate increases and the premium asset forth in our packet. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I, you know, I relate some of this to my own personal experience with the insurance coverage and, and what Trent talked about, increased people, different types of vehicles, the inflation factor, all the different things that have been taken into account. I don't like increases any more than anyone else, but I think it's a reasonable increase in, given all the factors compared to what I've seen on a personal side.
Thank you for that information. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, we did not get to hear a aye from Doug.
Morning, guys.
Morning, Doug.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right. In that at fifty minutes, we're going to take a break right now and we will reconvene at nine thirty.
We will. We'll hear from McKenzie Phillips on the proposed changes to the Finney County and Garden City Contract Service for Neighborhood and Development Services. Good morning, please announce yourself for the public.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, the Board of County Commissioners is asked to approve proposed changes to the interlocal agreement between Finney County and the City of Garden City for the services provided by Neighborhood and Development Services to the county. County and city staff have had multiple meetings over the past six months to discuss the level of services provided by the NDS Department. The results of these meetings were presented to the City Commission at a pre-meeting on May 2nd of 2023, and to the County Commission at a work session on May 18th, 2023. During the county work session on May 18th, the Board directed staff to move forward with amending the existing interlocal agreement. So the alternatives before you today are the Board may approve the changes to the interlocal agreement and request staff to send it to the city for review. Alternative two, the Board may approve the changes to the interlocal agreement with additional changes and request staff send it to the city for review with the additions. And number three, the Board may not approve the interlocal agreement proposal and direct staff on how to proceed. Staff recommends alternative one, and for the fiscal and policy impact, the county currently pays the city $236,112.10 with an up to an annual increase of no more than 5%. It is unknown at this time if the city is going to propose to increase this amount with the changes that are being made. If a new interlocal agreement is adopted, it will supersede and replace the previous interlocal agreement from December 2015, which shall be deemed to be terminated by both parties as of the effective date of the new agreement. So I can go through the each change if you would like, or I can just be here to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions to the alternatives suggested by McKenzie, and then after we have questions to McKenzie, I have questions of council. Commissioners?
No questions at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I thought they incorporated most all the things that we had in our discussion, and so I appreciated the work that's been done on this. The only thing is if we do adopt this with the changes, I noticed on page seven you have Deb Boyler and Jerry Schultz, but on page eight, those names were not changed in the notary statements, so.
We'll make sure to change those.
Make sure if we adopt this, that those get changed on page eight to coincide with the study.
Okay.
I can interlinigate those if the council will approve.
Oh, well, okay.
As I understand it, this is explained for both us and the public, this was yourself and Ms. Schartz and city attorney staff, and or was this just city management?
City attorneys have and city management has not reviewed this yet. With the changes, with the significant changes that we're making in some areas, we wanted to bring it to the Board first to see if you supported the changes before we sent it to the city to review.
All right, very good, thank you. Well, my comment is, is I think we ought to make these constructive changes, and I'm in favor of the work that was done. If you would stay there for a minute, Ms. Schartz, do you think we ought to adopt these changes to the interlocal agreement?
And realistically today, it's just that you're approving of the changes that are being suggested at this point, so it's not even necessarily that you would have to sign off on it today, it's just approving, sending it over to the city at this point in time with the changes that are made. I think at least as far as for this next coming year, I think that we've made some changes that needed to be made per the discussions that were had prior. I think that there's probably more that can be done through the agreement, but I think that those are the long-term goals that we had discussed and hopefully getting something reworked long-term, but I think in the for the immediate, I think these address some of the immediate concerns at least.
So you're just looking for consensus for us, or are you looking for resolution?
I think we're just looking for consensus today so that we can then send it over to the city so that they can do their portion on this one and what it is that needs to happen on their end.
Mr. Jones, do you have any problems with any of the changes?
I don't, the city's not taking this up for formal action yet either, right?
Correct.
No, I have no.
Their administration and legal has not reviewed it.
Correct.
We may have some changes.
Yes.
From our perspective, this is a go to these changes, is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Any Commissioners that disagree with that consensus?
I don't disagree, but I, you know, I can just see we're starting negotiations, so there are probably lots of changes.
Well, I don't know, McKenzie's really good at what she does.
Well, thank you.
All right, questions from city staff? You may, thank you, McKenzie. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning Chair and Commissioner Danielle Burke, Assistant City Manager with the City of Garden City. As you alluded to, we have not yet reviewed this agreement, and it is not in fact on the county or the city commission's meeting tomorrow for consideration, there are a couple kind of questions that we have that will follow up with your staff to kind of make sure that we can work through as we have not yet reviewed it with our with our legal team, so. I don't want anyone caught off guard, if you look at our city commission meeting tomorrow and don't see this on there, that's because we still need to do our due diligence and our staff work on the city side to review this agreement and bring back any suggested changes, it was a little bit beyond the scope we were expecting to see initially, so we just want to make sure that we have good clarity and all of our questions answered, so. We will, if you all approve this today, get it to our city commission at a future meeting, but that will not be tomorrow's meeting, but happy to answer questions if you guys, if you have them.
Message is, is McKenzie and Carr authorized to contend along with the administrator to continue negotiations of the interlocal agreement, these proposed changes are approved.
Appreciate it, nope, thank you very much.
Alright, McKenzie, thank you. Alright, we'll move on, I think you're back up on high rusk, I'm sure that's risk, I think.
It's supposed to be risk.
Came out as high rusk.
Yeah.
You know, there's only one perfect person that's the typist or reviewer, and by my faith, we crucified that person, the rest of us are human, so. I live in a business where typographical errors exist despite our best efforts, so please tell us all about the high rusk rural road.
Okay, so the Board of County Commissioners is asked to sign the cost plus net fee agreement for the preliminary engineering services for the 2024 High Risk Rural Road Project. Public Works was awarded the 2024 High Risk Rural Road Project in March 2022. RFQs for preliminary engineering services were received in September of 2022. We received one from Kirk, we only received one, and that was from Kirk and Michael. Kirk and Michael submitted their work estimate to KDOT in February 2023, and we were informed by KDOT that their estimate fits well with the KDOT estimate of ours. KDOT prepared the agreement, and it has been signed by Kirk and Michael, and it has been reviewed by our county counselor. So the alternatives before you today are, one, the Board may sign the agreement, two, the Board may not sign the agreement. Staff recommends alternative one, and for the fiscal impact, the HRR grant is a 90-10 program, so engineering services are not to exceed $32,984.99, and the total amount Finney County will be responsible for is $3,298.50.
Questions on the presentation on high-risk rural roads? Say that one three times fast. If there aren't any questions, then I needed a motion to approve the suggested.
Mr. Chairman.
And as well as authorizing the chair to sign the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that motion for approval and grant you the authority to sign.
This actually has multiple commission signatures.
So sign all documents necessary, Mr. Jones? That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the project as proposed, and for the chair to sign all documents necessary. Any further discussion? I do have one thing, as I read all of this, this is for the extension of which roads in particular?
So this is for VFW Road, the one coming up next will be for Maple Street. So the VFW Road, I believe it goes from Maple all the way up to, I can't remember, yes. Yep, the bypass, so and I think it's for extending the shoulders, putting in some rumble strips, and making some improvements to the road itself.
All right, any other discussion or comments? Very good, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
We're glad that motion passed.
90-10 projects, we've got to take advantage of. Although one motion was considerable ages.
Mr. Chairman, was that for the 2024 contract, do we have another one?
Yes, we have another one for the 2025. Yes, this is an application, and this isn't the contract.
Would you proceed with the application?
Yes, so the Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and sign the KDOT project programming request, Form 1302, for the 2025 HRR project. So Public Works received notification for the 2025 HRR call for projects from KDOT in December 2022. Staff reviewed the projects that were outlined in the local road safety plan. Improvements to Maple Street from Taylor Avenue to VFW Road was the project chosen by staff. This program allows for federal funds to be used to pay at least 90% of the cost of the construction and the construction engineering for the project intended to improve the safety of rural roads. We submitted our application to KDOT in February 2023 and received notification in May of 2023 that our project had been selected. So the alternatives before you today are, one, the Board may choose to sign the pre-programming request, two, the Board may not choose to sign the project programming request, and staff recommends alternative one. So for the fiscal impact, the fiscal responsibility will be approximately 61,000, which is 10% of the total cost of the project. This project could be included in the 2025 budget, or it could be paid out of special highway fund.
Comments from the Commissioners, questions?
This is a one-mile project, is this a pretty major rebuild for a one-mile? Do you know what they're proposing on?
So I believe that they are proposing to expand the lanes and.
I admit I didn't read through all the 95 pages.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, I can't remember exactly what we are going to be doing, we're not going to be doing the rumble strips on this one, that was taken out of the project. We were originally going to be doing longer than the one-mile section, because in the local road safety plan, it did identify a longer section, but with the funding for the HRR program this year was decreased from KDOT, from what my understanding was, and so we shortened it so we could have a better chance of getting, receiving these funds.
Was Taylor East City, or are we strictly dealing with county?
We're strictly dealing with county, it's like, it's right outside the county area, so.
And the other thing, Dwayne, just on one of the pages, the construction is 477,000 out of the 600,000, the rest of it's design and inspection and so forth, so, I mean, it's still a lot of money, I get that, but it's broken down into parts for that 600,000.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve the 2025 HRRR application. So move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the 2025 HRRR application, is submitted, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give us a shot to get the paperwork done, Shruti, and then we'll get right to you.
That's going to be a lot of signatures in here. Majority of their commissions must have three members.
The state doesn't know that some have four, and then there's Windott County that has 13.
Well, there are two counties that have other than either three or five. That's Windott County and then up at Tribune, that's a unified government.
Johnson has seven and.
Yeah, I said Windott, it was Johnson County, yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll now hear from the Finney County Health Department Director regarding our pharmacist in charge, pharmacist in charge contract. Good morning, please state your name for everybody out there.
Good morning, I'm Shruti Chawla, Director at Finney County Health Department, and today we are asking the commission to reestablish the contract with the pharmacist in charge and update the provisions. Wendy Halseljust, she has served the county since 2007. The contract so far has been pretty rudimentary, so we've redone the contract, and the county counselor has reviewed the contract, and we proposed a new fee for her, which is in line with what is being currently paid by other counties.
All right, I believe we've had that contract in our packet as well as the presentation. My question to you, Shruti, are you satisfied with the services and you recommend us to sign this contract?
Yes.
Any other discussion from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the contract for the pharmacist.
And I would second with the chairman signing that contract.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that the contract be approved and authorized to sign, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. All right, I don't have anything under board governance, if no other Commissioners do either, we have set our goals. Yes, Mr. Co.
Go ahead, finish your comment.
We have set our goals for budgeting for 2024, we'll begin that process with a work session July 3rd, administrator so advises, and then I'll hear from Commissioner Pishney on board governance or comment.
Well, it relates to board governance, and the interim committees with the legislature have been assigned, both Republicans and Democrats and so forth, and I don't know if you all received the KCCA newsletter that Mike Taylor sends out, but it's a really nice piece about what the interims are going to be doing, and who the assigned legislators are. So I just simply, Mr. Chairman, wanted to call everybody's attention to this, it came in Friday, I believe, or late last week, and if you didn't get a copy, I would encourage you to grab a copy of that, Mike did a great job of summarizing those committees.
Like their scorecard they put out.
Yeah.
And scores are based on what got accomplished and what they failed to accomplish.
Property tax relief, failure number one.
But I, our representative, Bill Clifford, and I think, is on one of the interims, and I was thinking that
Bob Lewis is also.
Is on another one.
Yes.
And that's part of our governance process is advocacy and legislative issues, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Pishney, now we will move to staff reports, and McKenzie, you're back up with development update, please.
Good morning again, so for the development updates from the past two weeks, we were supposed to be having a pre-construction meeting last Friday for Randall Estates, and I had shown that in my report for the Randall Estates development sheet. That was postponed however, because we found out after it was scheduled that the the KDOT permit hasn't been approved by the state yet, and we don't know how much longer that process is going to take, and if it was just a week or two, we might have done the pre-construction meeting, but we're unsure of the timeline at this point, and so we are going to wait to do that pre-construction meeting until we have more of a concrete answer on if that permit's going to be approved or not. So in addition to the, my normal development updates, I did want to give you an update on the KDOT 83 project, that we were supposed to be having a work session with the Board and KDOT to discuss some of the changes, and specifically the box structure that would be part of the proposed trail within the comprehensive plan. So speaking with KDOT, they would prefer if they, if we could do a virtual, they could attend virtually, so I wanted to see if the Board would be in favor of that, or if you would rather them come here in person. They are coming from Lawrence, and so that's why they requested the virtual work session.
Well, with our technology and our Carol Brown room, those work fairly well. Mr. Administrator, do you think that we could do Zoom or something?
Yes, absolutely, we can get that set up.
I would like to see it set up and with dispatch, keep in mind that we're pretty busy on the third already with the work session.
Mm-hmm.
Coordinate times, and you can also poll Commissioners, I'd like to have as many of us as possible, this 83 is going to be a big project for all of us, as well as anytime we can bend KDOT's ear as to what we think locally is really, really important for all of us, sometimes I feel like we've been left out in the cold, so let's take them up on their invitation to participate.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we have our two representatives invited, particularly Bill Clifford, because he's been a strong advocate for trails and that box and so forth, he may have some input with regard to that, and I think out of courtesy that Bob Lewis should be invited as well.
We'll invite our, let's get the Senator here if he's available.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's available, but yeah, certainly, I'm not trying to leave him out, but I'm not sure he's available this summer, but.
Okay.
Very good.
Definitely will.
Hey, get it set up, I guess.
Okay, will do.
All right.
So I have just a few more updates, one is following the work session that we had from May 18th, where in addition to the changes to the interlocal agreement, it was also requested that we come up with a timeline for changing, a proposed timeline for updating our regulations. And so we have reached out to a consultant that's done work in the community before to see if they could give us a ballpark price, and also how long it would take. So I'll be working on creating that proposed timeline, and you will see it soon coming up into the future. And then the last update that I have is that next week, or it's either going to be July, the first meeting in July or the second meeting in July, we'll be bringing another, a new RHID potential area for the Board to review. I wanted to let you know before that came, this is the first step in the RHID process, so it's identifying the area as a potential location, this will be sent to the Secretary of Commerce to review and approve before it can go any further.
Right, and we have a county RHID development contract that we've worked through, and so that developer has that form, what we'll be requiring once we get to that phase.
He has a list of things that he, will be required from him and from us.
Really excited about that, and we got a pretty full agenda already for the third, and I, just to let you know, I'll be absent on the 17th, but
Okay.
Vice Chairman Jones is going to be here and run that meeting.
Okay, that's all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
Questions of McKenzie with regard to the development update? Exciting news, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, how are you today?
Doing well, thank you. He, I sent out a few invitations last week. One of them was for the open house coming up, I believe, on the twenty-seventh up in Colby for the eighty-three project. I think, I think Lon is the only one that is. Mentioned that he'd be able to make it to that. It's just a broad overview of that project from there as it goes south, just south of us here. Other items on the concern or work schedule, predominantly these next two weeks will be filled with pulling that budget document together for your review on the third. That Jenny is working diligently on, on that, that's predominantly what's going on there. I think we do have a meeting this Thursday night with the J D C. To discuss the budget and a few things. That is it for me, unless you have any questions.
Questions for the administrator. Thank you very much. Moving on to the county counselor, do you have anything that you can discuss publicly?
I, I did attend C L E from the Kansas County Counselors Association this past Friday. It was interesting, and there's some information that I've attempted to pass along to some others just so that they'll have it. It was, I particularly liked the last presentation within it about solving conflict using emotional intelligence. I think Jay Hall did a really good job of presenting that one. And I actually think that that would be good information to share beyond even just attorneys into the general workforce, even here in Finney County. Just a really good presentation. I do have some requests for executive session today. I think the first one is ongoing litigation for an attorney-client privilege.
I see those on our agenda. We'll move on to the, finish the agenda as to the remaining reports. With regard to the department monthly reports, Robert, we have that information here. Do you have anything you need to add to those?
No, no additional information.
Does anybody have any questions of the administrator with regard to the monthly reports? And we'll move on to the, Madam Clerk, do we have anything to add to your upcoming meetings and events?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, very good. Then we get back, circle all the way around as to our agenda, back to the executive sessions, which we need to hold this morning. I believe the first one is for the purpose of attorney-client privilege. We need to have the administrator, the county counselor, anybody else with the attorney-client privilege meeting?
I know that H R requested one of these that's attorney-client, and the second one, Kara.
Correct, I was going to take them in order, I will. First one, there's attorney-client, ongoing litigation. Anybody else to be present for the meeting?
I think for, for one of those, H R needs to be involved, but I think one...
Wouldn't it be simpler just to have H R present if they choose on the first executive session and we'll go on? And do we want the assistant administrator with us today, or is there... Would that be okay? All right, I entertain a motion for, to go into executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege to receive attorney-client information from the county counselor, to have the assistant and the administrator and county counselor present, H R if they would like. Is there a motion to that effect?
How much time, Jerry?
Ten minutes on this one?
I think so, for the first one, yes.
For ten minutes, I'll offer that motion.
Second. Been moved and seconded to go into executive session as set forth in the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Host, we are in executive session, we'll reconvene at twelve after ten.
Need the motion to go back into regular session. Need the motion to go back into regular session.
Move. Move.
Seconded to go back into regular session. Seconded to go back into regular session. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, I'll confirm for the record that no action was taken received litigation update. Opposed, I'll confirm for the record that no action was taken received litigation update. We have a need for a second executive session to meet with the administrator, assistant We have a need for a second executive session to meet with the administrator, assistant administrator, administrator, HR as well as the commission for attorney-client information for five minutes HR as well as the commission for attorney-client information for five minutes this time and this time and the county counselor. the county counselor. Is there a motion to that effect? Is there a motion to that effect?
No move. No move.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded.
Seconded. Seconded.
To go into executive session for five minutes and we, all those in favor say aye. To go into executive session for five minutes and we, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we'll reconvene at ten eighteen. Opposed, motion carries, we'll reconvene at ten eighteen. Executive session or back to regular session?
Yes.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to go back to regular session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're back in regular session, I'll confirm that no action was taken meeting with staff with regard to attorney-client privilege. Our last executive session this morning is for discussion of non-elected personnel with administrator, assistant administrator, council and HR if the administrator so chooses. Is there a motion to that effect and what's the length of time?
Law for that motion.
Length of time.
I think probably would be prudent to start at thirty minutes and then if we need to extend it if there are additional questions then.
Alright, we'll reconvene at ten fifty-two, thirty minutes right, ten fifty-two?
Yep.
I'll take my clock with me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive session.
It is ten fifty-two and I entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved, dear Speaker.
Been moved and seated to resume regular session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back in regular session. I will confirm to everyone that no action was taken. And the executive session was over review of non-elected personnel issues. We have a schedule of events that have been provided by the clerk. I think maybe I've asked you, are this, Dory, are there any additions or changes to the schedule?
No, none that I'm aware of.
All right. And what we don't have on our agenda is commissioners' reports. I'm going to take the time to hear from the commissioners on their updates before we adjourn today, starting with you, Commissioner Jones on your left.
Commissioner Jones on your left has no report, Mr. Chairman, other than L.A.P.C., which formerly was a monthly meeting, is again canceled due to some kind of conflict, so... And Library didn't meet this month.
Mr. Dris?
I have no official report on commissioner duties, just simply lots of roads, written and verbal.
Right. And we're going to deal with that as long as we are successful in obtaining rain from our creator. So, Commissioner Jones, far right.
Only thing, we have a J.D.C. meeting Thursday, which will expand on the budget requests, I imagine, to all counties. So Robert and I will both be attending that meeting. I don't know, is Jenny here? Okay, that's fine. I was just, just didn't want to leave you out if you were so inclined. Also had the, the Fannie County aging, I guess that's the way for it presented, has, was canceled last week because of lack of attendance, and so we're going to try it again Thursday. And then I also attended a Workforce One annual meeting, which was well-attended. It was interesting that the state had cut their budget, yet we're short of employees. I was, and most of the cost there, their increases too, were insurance. Not only property, but health insurance, their consortium. So those things have occupied my time this week, along with numerous calls on roads and growth of weeds in the ditches. And I said, that's a good thing, the growth of weeds. I said, that can be mitigated.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Pishner?
Not too much to report. The, I have been attending the Economic Development and Planning Commission as my assigned task. And you've heard what I heard with regard to the waiver request, et cetera, today from Planning Commission. The Extension District did not have a meeting last week as would be regularly scheduled. I assume they will in July. But I've been told that they're working on their budget information. And then I guess that was about it.
Thank you. I did not attend the Compass Board meeting in May, and we also do not have a Compass Board meeting in June. But I think I previously announced that Compass has received its C.B.H.C.C. designation, which is big news for our community and for that organization. And more to come on that. They have incredible workforce increases coming because of that designation and the ability to provide mental health services. I noticed in the county... They have incredible workforce increases coming because of that designation and the ability to provide mental health services. I noticed in the county newsletter that the clerk provided to all of us, mental health deficiencies in service with this designation. Compass, Parry Mill Health is positioned to be a frontrunner in southwest Kansas on providing mental health services for all of us. Also with the addition of Mental Health Hospital by the legislature in, in Eldorado or Wichita, Wichita would be a really nice relief for those persons who are in need of inpatient treatment. Something that we do not have locally in Larnin being the closest facility. I don't have anything else. For us, I did meet with Workforce Solutions and Bob Kreitzer on getting the memorandum of understanding from the administration and from counselor, their plan still to go forward, and of course, we've already appropriated the fifty thousand. We don't have the paperwork yet to make a payment. They have their first presentation for Workforce Solutions here in Garden City on June fifth, right after the holiday and school is in place, you know, in order to attempt to get more of our high school students and junior college students to stay, work, and grow family here in Fannie County in southwest Kansas. Our investment in the Workforce Solutions won't bear fruit, probably, but will be seen in years to come. Anything else from the commissioners?
Question?
Yes, sir.
On June three, how late into the day do you anticipate we'll be meeting?
July third. We're going to go straight through the agenda. We may or may not have Law Enforcement Center work or outline, you know, there's a process for that, Robert.
Yes, we'll be trying to get that, the process for you. Yes.
Correct. And so that's on the agenda, and then we go straight into our work session. I know that Commissioner Pishney has a deadline of approximately two o'clock, I believe. Yeah, and so... We may be short of Commissioner and...
You may be too. I may still be harvesting.
Well, what a glorious thing to have. I didn't know there was going to be any wheat to harvest, so...
Oh, yeah.
That's wonderful. It has nine lives. This year's...
You can see it between the weeds.
Well, hopefully we get those harvest roads in shape so we get the harvest to town. If we don't have two of you, we'll go ahead and have a meeting on the third. But if anybody else is going to have any problems on the third, we need to know about it. We won't have a quorum.
I have a late afternoon problem. That's why I was asking.
Well, I have a real headache problem because Dr. Schultz didn't want to be here at all. So... We have a scheduled meeting. Got to start the budget process. Administrator wants us to meet to start that process. So, we will meet on the third unless we're going to be short of quorum, so...
I will contact you if I'm in harvest.
Well, we understand that.
Let you know.
Appreciate it. I hope you don't get stuck in the road or out in your field. What a problem.
We'll pray for rain on the second.
To ensure your attendance.
I didn't today. Did you notice?
Yeah, I noticed.
Lot of...
The Lord read your mind.
Lot of good things happening in our world. Appreciate everybody being here and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll offer the motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.